All right, well, I'd like to welcome everybody. It is 5:30. I'd like to welcome everybody to the April Board of Commissioners meeting, regular meeting. Thank you for everyone attending. We're excited to have you guys here. So we'll call this meeting to order. If you would join me, I'm going to lead us in an invocation as we get started. By the way, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. We thank you for our community. We thank you just for all that you're doing. Tonight, we just ask you for peace and healing of our community, for just so much that's going on. We're asking for you just to wrap your arms around us as a county, that you bring us all together, that you point us in the right direction. Ask that you guide our board tonight as we go through this meeting, that the decisions that we may be made in a way that's honoring to you, that you recognize just how proud we are of so many in our community, and that we had the opportunity tonight to recognize them. So we thank you for that. We thank you for loving us and for giving us the opportunity to be here in Jesus' name. Amen. Mr. Hellrobin, do we listen to the flag of peace?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with ever being and justice for all.
Thank you. Item three on our agenda is amendments to the agenda. I know that we advertised the proposed agenda a couple of days ago. I do have two amendments that I would like to call attention to. The first is to add a C under the consent items for the proclamation for Crime Victim Rights Week. That came up right after the agenda was posted. We had that, so we needed to add that on there. And also, adding item C under the action items is the Fire Chief Oath of Duty. So I'd like to add those. Are there any other amendments that need to be made as we move forward? All right, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the agenda for tonight. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. We will move forward with our agenda. So on the next item is recognitions. I know for those of you that aren't here regularly, we take time to recognize employees during our first Thursday meeting each month. But this being tonight, I know it's our third Thursday, we had a recognition that we would like to do, and I think they're all standing up in the hallway because they're used to walking in famously. But we would love to recognize the Pickens High School Nets basketball team tonight. They led us all the way to the Final Four, some exciting games. I had an opportunity to get to go to the last couple of games when they were traveling through in the Elite Eight and to the Final Four. Probably the most exciting group of basketball players you'll ever get to see. I know we've got several of them here tonight. One comment that was made right after the Final Four, I know post, I'd be probably read it on Facebook, and I can't take credit for it, I've got to give Ms. Jennifer Bryant, one of the moms of one of the players, but she actually captured and wrote this very eloquent, incredible speech that summarized the season, but in it, she made the comment at the heart of the community. And I knew when we drove to Fort Valley, when you guys were playing in the Final Four, we were riding back, and that was the one thing I kept thinking about coming back, is just to see the excitement of how every one of you captured the heart of the community, that it captured the entire heart of Pickens County. And we were so proud, we wanted to make sure to recognize you for everything. The exciting part is to see that only a couple were seniors. So we get to expectations just get higher and higher and higher. But so I'm going to call out everyone's name, and we did have a couple of things that we want to present. If you're here, because I'm not going to know everybody's name.
Do you want any more?
If you wanted, well, we can hand them out as we go through, or we can give you the rest to give out if that's okay.
Sure.
But I do want to recognize everyone's name that was here. I was joking because it actually has their height on there, and I thought we could call out their height. But we'll just call them out by name and number. So we have Ms. Emery Steinhauer, number two. Ms. Emery, are you here?
Yes.
I'd like to present that with you. Ms. Emmy Moore.
She's not here.
Okay. Bradley Dering.
Bradley Dering is not here.
Not here. Emma Glieses, I know she's here, Ms. Number 10, fierce competitor. Number 12, Ms. Bella Hopkins. If you've never watched Ms. Bella play, she is extremely intimidating to watch on defense that I would not want to have to face her in any way, shape, or fashion. Number 20, Ms. Jasmine Chastain. All right. Number 21, Amanda Nelson. Number 22, Abby Plumley. Number 23, Adrian Plumley. Number 24, Madison Powell.
Shailen Buchanan.
Shailen, okay. Buchanan, sorry.
It's all right.
All right. Number 30, Ms. Emery Bryant.
She's a golf pro.
32, Carolyn Mullins. And number 33, Carmen Mullins.
Working.
So we also have, in addition to the players, the support team, we have manager Philmer, Ms. Addison Lewis.
Not with us, no.
Head coach Brandon Thomas. We do know that Brandon Thomas is here. So we've got that. Is Jordan Shaw?
Jordan is texting and chatting for making.
Oh, okay, all right.
I'll give him a heart. He's from the football background.
Assistant coach Cannon Lutz.
Not here.
All right. Median stats, Randy Pettichon.
I'll be glad to get that to him.
And then bookkeeper Jamie Hopkins. We just really want to stand and applaud you and say thank you so much. It may be easier if y'all want to slide to the middle, and then we'll stand in the back middle, or we're not all trying to pack in so tight, and get a couple of pictures if that feels good.
Thank you. You're awesome, man. Where are we looking for?
You just have to pick it there.
Okay, let's go.
All right, they weren't.
Brandon, all right. All right. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you all.
We appreciate it.
I really appreciate it. We're looking to see you.
Don't enjoy your meal.
They're always exciting. I know getting to recognize them. Last year, we recognized the Elite Eight, and this year was the Final Four, so I'll give you a preamble to what next year will be when we get to recognize them as the state champions. So they are an amazing team, for sure. Next on ours is to go through our consent agenda. We had a busy month with proclamations this month. We had, the first was a prevent child abuse proclamation. That was signed by myself and the mayor earlier in the month, announcing the Child Abuse Awareness Month was the month of April. You'll see the pinwheels and the signs in front of our building and throughout the community recognizing child abuse awareness, doing an incredible job with that. The second proclamation from this week was for our very own dispatchers, the week of April 10th through the 16th was National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. So we had an opportunity on the 12th to recognize Ms. Easterwood and her staff in the Number One Center for the incredible work that they do, that is just amazing, what they're able to accomplish. And then, just yesterday, on the 20th, we were able to do a proclamation for Crime Victim Rights Week, which is April 24th through the 30th, 2022. Group came, and we were able to do a proclamation for them as well. So I wanted to put those on the record, that each of those proclamations were done this month, and we're excited to see all the incredible things they're doing. Under old business, I do not have any. Do you have any that I'm not aware of? Okay, all right. We'll move forward from old business to new business. The first is the 457 plan. This is a resolution to amend our deferred compensation plan for Pickens County employees. Essentially, all it is is to add an option that not only can they have a standard IRA 457 retirement, but then we add an option for a 457 Roth, that they can contribute to a Roth as well. That way, the employees would have an option to contribute, whichever their preference would be. The ACCG prepared the documentation to be resolved for Pickens County Board of Commissioners approving the adoption agreement. Amendment one to the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia Deferred Compensation Plan for Pickens County Employees, that the Board is hereby authorized, empowered, and directed to take all the actions to execute the documents necessary to implement the resolution. And essentially, all it says is that we're adding an option for a Roth 457, so the employees can pick that choice. Do I have a move to pass the resolution allowing employees to have that option?
Sure.
All right, I'll second that. Any discussion or questions? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Give our employees one more option to, they can choose to set aside retirement. The second is a cooperative extension agreement. This is something that's passed annually where we work with our cooperative extension agent, which is Mr. Justin Philumbum, and it's the agreement for the budget and salary that the county is responsible. It's something that was included in our budget at the beginning of the year, showing the budget for the cooperative extension of each of the $2,049 for the annual budget. It's just required on there, and that we have had this agreement annually put into place. So I'll make a motion that we approve the agreement with the state Cooperative Education. Do I have a second?
Sure.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. The third item under new business is the premises use agreement with the Boys and Girls Club. Just a little bit of a background history as to what this one is. Our insurance changed this year to not allow us to operate the summer camp at the Boys and Girls Club the way that we had done in the past. We were not able to continue without, we would lose our insurance essentially if we tried. I've got to give Mr. Jones the incredible credit for reaching out to the Boys and Girls Club Director to speak to them about trying to make our facilities be more available to them so that they could expand the number of kids that they could serve. We were a dual process. Kids were either going to the Boys and Girls Club or to Parks and Recreation. We reached out to see, could they actually handle additional kids coming in? And with the use of some of our facilities, they believed that they could. The facilities that we were including is to have access to a classroom and then through this, the pool during the week, that they would have a time slot that the Boys and Girls Club could use the pool. This agreement is to work with them on being able to provide that summer enrichment program. It is a resolution essentially establishing that mutual premises and covenants hereby are received. Get to the next page. Authorized usage of the county grants to the Boys and Girls Club a license to use specified areas of the premises of the recreation center as specified here in Section 3 of the agreement for a period beginning June 1st, 2022, ending July 31st, 2022. The use of specified areas of the recreation center will be subject to the terms and conditions of the agreement. Essentially, it's an indemnification where they're accepting liability for their kids while they're participating on our property, so we're just entering into that agreement. Make a move that we accept the agreement. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do you have any questions or further discussion on that? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries as well. So the next item is our finance report. I'm going to turn the floor over to Ms. Charlene Bunch to provide that.
The March 22 financial reports reflect three months of the 2022 fiscal year budgets. Expenditure budgets should not exceed 25%. The general revenue for March of 2022 was 4.8 million compared to 4.48 million and 21. As you can see here, we received $4,848,775, which is 13.8% of the budget. Our countywide total expenditures for March of 2022, we expensed $6.1 million compared to $6.0 million of 2021. Our expenditures are currently 1.8% under the allowable percentage, which was 25%. The general governmental expenditures were $869,66 at 17.23%. Judicial expenditures were $792,132 at 20.30%. Public safety expenditures, $3,218,33, which was 22.12%. Public work expenditures were $770,165 at 16.76%. Health and welfare expenditures were $30,711 at 10.85% of the budget. Culture and recreation expenditures were $288,102, and that was about 24% of the budget. Housing and development, $164,328 was 19.58% of the budget. And enterprise funds were $688,560 at 17.96% of the budget. Land budget reports were distributed to department heads and elected officials on April 21st, and I have copies of those reports if you'd like to.
Thank you very much. I know that they've been actively working closely with our audit firm, going through and conducting the annual audit for this year, that hopefully by the end of next month, we'll have that completed and we'll be prepared to have that presentation made. They're working, I know Charlene is looking forward to that being over so that she can probably take vacation, and we'll have to try to find a way to bring her back whenever she doesn't. Thank you very much. All right, next, we're going to move into our action items. Action items is to approve minutes. There were three sets of minutes in the month of March. March 17th, we had a regular meeting and a work session, and then on March the 24th, we had a call meeting, and that was to approve the paving bid contract. So we had those three different meetings. I know that the minutes have been distributed to each board member prior to tonight, and hopefully we've all had a chance to read over those. Do I have a motion to approve our minutes?
Sure.
I'll second those. Any questions, discussions? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. So the next is an appointment on the Planning Commission. We had one member that had stepped down, leaving a vacancy on the Planning Commission, Mr. Rodney Buckingham stepped down from his position there, leaving a position that would be open through December 31st, 2024. I would like to make a move that we appoint Mr. Kevin Moss, living on the west end of Pickens County, to the Planning Commission. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Curious as well. I will pause for just a moment because I would like to recognize our Planning Commission, that they're all volunteers that get appointed and are willing to serve on that committee, to endure some difficult decisions and endure some difficult situations from time to time, never having the popular time of getting to hold the public hearing aspect of our rezones. And so I would like to say thank you to each and every one that is willing to serve in that capacity and the difficulty this thing. The next is kind of an exciting moment, is something that we don't get to do very often. It's rare that the Board of Commissioners is administering an oath of office, but we were fortunate to hire a fire chief last month. We had Mr. Tim Prather join us to serve as the fire chief, working under Sloan Elrod as the Director of Public Safety. So I'd like to call Mr. Prather and whoever you'd like to have in line, and we'll administer your oath. I don't want to be standing up above you when we do this, so that's maybe gets my head in the background. Join me here. But if you would, join me and place your head in the back, we'll raise your right hand. I Timothy L. Prather. I Timothy L. Prather. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of Georgia, and I will respect, honor, and obey the laws and ordinances of Pickens County. I will demonstrate integrity, honesty, and ethical behavior while on duty and off duty, and regard my fellow firefighters with the same standards as I hold for myself. Today, I recognize the badge of my duty as a symbol of public faith and accept it as a public trust. I hereby dedicate myself to the citizens and visitors of Pickens County to ensure their safety and the discharge of my duties. If so, please respond immediately.
I do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome, welcome, welcome. If you want to get your family up, we'll get the pictures, get your barns. You can't sneak away that easy. We're testing him out early. We had an actual swearing in the first day of the job in the office, but it was just the two of us really standing there, but we wanted to do something more formal to bring his family. Tim actually started his career in Jasper a year or two ago, and then went to Cherokee County where he was able to serve, worked his way up through the ranks, retired as fire chief, and after retiring, we nabbed him back up, so. How far?
You're good.
Okay.
Yeah, and everybody else just. Oh, that's what I was saying, I have things coming.
All right, so you want to bring a couple from that end, that way he's.
Yeah, y'all, maybe, there you go. Then y'all come in. There we go. There you go, thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Stranger danger, stranger danger.
Those music chairs want to make up, you're trying to figure out who you're supposed to sit in. All right, let everybody get out, stepping up. So we have a number of rezones tonight to go through. I know that the Director, Planning and Zoning Commission, I'll go through as we do each one. There were two different Planning Commission meetings that we're actually going to be hearing both of those meetings tonight, just because of the way the date on the calendar fell as to the amount of time needed between the two. So we'll have two meetings worth, I think there's 10 total rezones, so we're going to go through those in as orderly a fashion as we possibly can so that we'll make sure we're getting through each one. Bring up, the first one is a request for change in land use classification on parcel 027, 042, 009 at 331 Sequilly Trail. That was an application that was provided to the Planning and Development Office on January the 6th from Margaret Longsdale and Hannah Schedel, requesting a change in the land use classification from estate residential to agricultural on a 3.3 acre tract located at the address mentioned above. The intended purpose of the rezoned request, if approved, was to combine with an adjoining property already zoned agricultural. Public hearing was held on the 14th of March regarding the application, and the Planning Commission voted six yes, zero no to approve the rezoned request on the 3.3 acre tract on tax map, mark parcel 027, 042, 009. That's been forwarded as a recommendation for approval for our consideration. I would like to make a motion that we accept the recommendation of the Planning Commission for approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. The second is a request for change in land use classification on parcel 027, 042 and 027, 042, 007 at 631 Sequilly Trail in Jasper. Application was received on January the 21st from Jenna Finley and Valerie Jacobson, requesting a change in land use classification from rural residential to agricultural on a 24.903 acre tract located at 631 Sequilly Trail. The intended purpose was, if approved, is to combine with an adjoining property already zoned agricultural. Public hearing was held on March the 14th, and the Planning Commission voted six yes, zero no to approve the rezoned request of the 24.903 acre tract. Make a motion that we accept the recommendation from the Planning Commission to approve this rezoned request. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor? The third recommendation is a request for change in land use classification on parcel 053B, 018 at 112 Plum Lane, Jasper, Georgia. The Planning and Development Office received a completed application on January the 25th from Tim Prather, requesting a change in the land use classification from neighborhood commercial to rural residential on a 16.54 acre tract located at 112 Plum Lane. Intended purpose of the rezoned request, if approved, was to build a single-family residence on the property. Public hearing was held on March the 14th with the Planning Commission. Planning Commission voted six yes, zero no to approve the rezoned request on the 16.54 acre tract contained on map parcel 053B, 018. Do I have a move to approve this rezoned request?
Two minutes.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. It is approved. All right, next is a request for change in land use classification on parcel 049, 081, 002 on Partain Road in Marble Hill, Georgia. Planning and Development Office received a completed application on February the 3rd from True Tony Gwynne, requesting a change in the land use classification of rural residential to highway business on a 1.02 acre tract located on Partain Road, Marble Hill. Intended purpose of the rezoned request, if approved, was to ensure proper zoning for an existing commercial business on the property. Public hearing was held on the 11th of April regarding the application of the Pickens room. Planning Commission voted four yes, zero no to approve the rezoned request on the 1.02 acre tract contained on the parcel with the following conditions. No additional storage units placed on property without proper buffers and setback lines to include privacy fence. A sliding gate at both entrances, primary entrances to be located on Partain Road. Hours of operation limited to 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and deterred security lights away from the adjacent single-family residence. I'd like to make a move that we follow the recommendation from the Planning Commission to approve with conditions their request. Do I have a second?
Sure.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Approved as well. Next on the list is a request for change in land use classification on parcel 016, 021, 043 on Dry Pond Road, Ranger, Georgia. Planning and Development Office received completed application on February the 3rd from David Hicks, requesting a change in the land use classification from agricultural to small agricultural on a 5.01 acre tract located on Dry Pond Road in Ranger. Intended purpose is for future single-family residents. Public hearing was held on April the 11th, and the Planning Commission voted four yes, zero no to approve the rezoned request as presented. I'll make a motion that we follow the recommendation and approve this rezoned request. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Approved. All right, next on the list is a request for change in land use classification on parcel 062, 011 at 1460 Camp Dobbs Road, Jasper. Planning and Development Office received completed application on February the 15th from the estate of Douglas Gay, care of Clint Weatherby, requesting a change in the land use classification of agricultural to small agricultural on a 30.05 acre tract located in 1460 Camp Dobbs Road. Intended purpose of the rezoned request, if approved, was to split the southern portion of the parcel into six five-acre lots for resup. Public hearing was held on the 11th of April regarding the application, and the vote was four yes, zero no to approve rezoned request on the 30.05 acre tract contained on tax map parcel 062, 011. I'll make a motion that we follow their recommendation for approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Curious as well. Next is a request for change of land use classification on parcel 033, 148, 033, or 003 at 427 Crossbow Lane, Talkin' Rock. Planning and Development Office received completed application on February the 15th from Crossbow Farms LLC, requesting a change in the land use classification of agricultural to highway business on a .5 acre tract located at 427 Crossbow Lane, Talkin' Rock. Intended purpose of the rezoned request, if approved, was to combine the half acre with an adjoining property already zoned highway business. Public hearing was held on the 11th of April regarding the application, and the Planning Commission voted four yes, zero no to approve the rezoned request of the half acre tract located at tax map parcel 033, 148, 003. I'll make a move that we follow their recommendation for approval from agricultural to highway business. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Approved as well. Next is a request. Uh, next is a request for change in land use classification on parcel 017, 055, Big Ridge Road, Talking Rock, Georgia. The Planning and Development Office received a completed application on February 15th from 1893 LLC requesting a change in the land use classification from agricultural to small agricultural on a 55.39 acre tract located on Big Ridge Road in Talking Rock. Intended purpose of the rezone request, if approved, is to split the parcel into seven five plus acre lots for resow. Uh, public hearing was held on the 11th of April and Planning Commission voted three yes, zero no with one abstaining to approve the rezone request of the 55.39 acre tract contained on tax map parcel 017, 055. I'll make a motion that we follow the recommendation for approval from, presented from the Planning Commission. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All right, we're almost there. Two more to go. Uh, next is a request for change in land use classification on parcel 064, 094, 001 located at 4101 Waleska Highway 108. Uh, Planning and Development Office received a completed application on February the 18th from Lee Riddle requesting a change in the land use classification of rural residential to agricultural on a 1.01 acre tract located at 4101 Waleska Highway. All right, I have to pause to date myself. Does anybody remember the commercial that had 4101 Buford Highway that was on the radio all the time? Y'all, that was so hard to actually say, and I'm sorry I had to stop, but I almost said it the wrong way and I, I had to catch myself there. But the, the tract of land was located at 4101 Waleska Highway 108. Uh, the intended purpose of the rezone request, if approved, is to combine with an adjoining property already zoned agricultural. Uh, public hearing was conducted on the 11th of April and the Planning Commission voted for yes, zero no to approve the rezone request of the 1.1, 01 acre tract. Uh, I'll make a move that we follow the recommendation of the Planning Commission for approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All right. Last one, uh, is a request for change in land use classification on parcel 014, 005, 003 at 300 Shady Grove Church Road in Talking Rock. Uh, Planning Commission, Planning and Development Office received a completed application on February the 23rd from Nicholas Michael Regan requesting a change in the land use classification of rural residential to agricultural on a 24.57 acre tract located at 300 Shady Grove Church Road. Intended purpose of the rezone request, if approved, is to use the property for agricultural purposes. Um, the public hearing was held on the 11th of April and the Planning Commission voted for yes, zero no to approve the rezone request on the 24.57 acre tract. I'll make a move that we follow the recommendation from the Planning Commission for approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Complete our rezones for the night. Um, next item on the agenda is guest comments. Do I have any guest comments tonight? Well, with no guest comments at 6:04, I'd like to make a move that we adjourn. Do I have a second for that?
Second.
Beaming Jared. Thank you again for coming tonight. We appreciate you being here. Um, and welcome. Chief Prather to the team. Thank you.